And I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, April 6, 2023, Glendale County Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, I will lead us in the invocation and then I've asked Troop 224's newest Eagle Scout to lead us in our pledge tonight. And Logan, Logan, yeah, I know. Logan is joining us tonight. He's worked through his Eagle program and you may have seen in the paper where he has had his ceremonies. He is the youngest in Troop 224's history to make Eagle Scout and that's quite an accomplishment. I've known Logan his entire life so, and I know his parents, I know his grandparents on both sides. I know his great-grandparents on both sides. He comes from a, he comes from a wonderful family. So I've asked him to come up after I I've asked him to come up after I give the invocation to the microphone and lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with us, please. Our Father, we just thank you for the privilege of living in this great community. We thank you of your abundant love. We thank you tonight, most of all, for your son. And we thank you for the cross, and overcoming the cross, and overcoming the grave. Tomorrow is Friday, but Sunday is coming, and we just celebrate you in that. We thank you for all the employees of Glendale County. We thank you for our first responders. We thank you for our military in serving this great nation. And we just ask that you would be with us through this evening. Lift us up, Father, that everything that we do and say would bring honor and glory to your name. And as in your most precious name, we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would, give Logan a hand. We thank you for what the Boy Scouts of America does to raise new leaders and lead us into a new generation. So, thank you again, Logan and family, for being here with us tonight. All right. Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, second by Commissioner Booker, to approve the consent agenda, except for any item someone wishes to pull. Any items? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. And that was for general business and finance?
No, just general business.
Just general business.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I want to pull item 27 for discussion. And do we need to vote on that, Aaron, or do we go on to approve the consent agenda?
That's right.
Approve it, yeah. Consent with that exception.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 27, and anything else somebody else wants to pull.
Second.
All right. So, I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, second again by Commissioner Booker, to approve the consent agenda finance committee, except for item number 27, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other items to be pulled? All right, then we will, all in favor of approving the consent agenda finance, except for 27, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. So, we'll go to item number 27. Commissioner Rofalski.
Mr. Chairman, we pull this for the reason of the Swindell Construction Company of Glenville, Georgia, has not received their certification to receive funds from American Rescue Plans yet. They have the, they don't have the certificate, but they have been approved. So, with that said, I move to award a contract for the Somersby Point roadway and drainage improvement construction to Swindell Construction Company Incorporated of Glenville, Georgia, in the amount of $1,198,083, with funding to be provided by the American Rescue Plan Act funds contingent on receiving federal confirmation of an active SAM.gov registration and of non-suspension or debarment.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski. Do I hear a second?
Second, and a question.
Discussion, all right. We have a, we have a second by Commissioner Booker, and then we'll open the floor for discussion.
To get a SAM's and DON's number is pretty simple. Are we sure that there's no issues with them? Has the staff checked with them about the debarment?
They do have the number, but because it's federal funds, we're required to receive certification from the organization saying they haven't been suspended or debarr'd. We expect that certification next week. We just haven't received it as of yet. We were hoping it would be here before tonight. So, we just wanted to add that clause in there, just to cover us under the federal money, saying that we're waiting for that certification. Once that happens, we are good to go.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Monson. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
I've got a question, and maybe, Tamara, you can answer it, or maybe, Mr. Austin. Is there a timeline on this that you think that we may be hearing on that? I know that it's important.
We expected to receive it this week. We may get it Monday, with tomorrow being a holiday. I would fully expect we will have it by next week, and Resident Talbert, our procurement officer, is following up on that.
And when we get that approval, how soon do you think that the project will begin? Immediately?
Immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Tamara, is there not some way through the procurement process for us to check with the government? They don't have a website for us to put information in, to verify, then it happened to, you know, I mean, I'm fine with them providing it.
And Reston, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Resident Talbert, procurement officer. We have verified they're not suspended or debarr'd, but that third prong is that they are active in the SAM.gov. I think they applied the 28th, and their response is within 10 days, they will get the response. So, we should hopefully have something next week. But they're not suspended or debarr'd.
Okay, yeah, that's the big thing. That other stuff is, I mean, I can feel, I can feel that out. That's not anything big. All right, thanks.
Moving on. All right, public hearing for ZM 5281. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. Item number 32, ZM 5281, Glen Hope, excuse me, Glen New Hope Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the Glen New Hope Plan Development District PD, case number ZM 4654, amended by ZM 5172, for approximately 1,039 acres located at 5410, Highway 17 North, parcel numbers 02-00016, 03-13172, 03-26901, and 03-23279. The applicant proposes to revise the master plan and revise language in the PD text. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Fred Barber, Glen New Hope, 1043 LLC owner. And Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 5281, Glen New Hope. This, there have been several other amendments to Glen New Hope. This particular one is to amend the PD to allow educational and university uses, add some additional development standards that are specific to movie studios. They do have, they did receive a site plan approval for a movie studio on the site. Also to clarify uses within the commercial multifamily tracts. Within their master plan, they have expanded some of the uses on the area. They have expanded the highway commercial acreage, the medium residential acreage, and then, and then they also indicated an area that would be specific for the university use within their conservation tract. So, this is the property where the star is located. And it's on the north end of Highway 17, near the intersection with Highway 99. Just aerial view of the property. And this is the PD text that's also in your packet. And as you can see, they, they've had some different conversations with the movie studios that are interested in the, in the project, and so they had some additional language that would be specific to what they would need on the property in order to have it viable as a filming location. This is their current master plan. Their last amendment they did last year, they expanded a lot of the conservation area. So, that's what you see in this green at the top of this screen. And then with their proposed master plan, and I have a side-by-side in the next slide that shows some of the changes. So, primarily the changes, this highway commercial area is expanding by an additional, I think it's 10 acres right here. At the very top of the screen, kind of in the purple color, that was all conservation area. Now that is dedicated as university or conservation. So, it could be either, but they also have the university research uses that could be in there. The medium residential is this kind of orange hatched area at the bottom of the master plan. On the south side of the property, which is right here, that acreage is staying the same as is what is kind of this central section. And they are expanding the medium residential up in this area as well. And just kind of a side-by-side to do a comparison. The Mainland Planning Commission did review this project and made a recommendation on March 7. They voted unanimously to recommend to the board approval as presented. And these are your possible motions. And I'm here to answer any questions you have. And Jake Hightower, as well as Fred Barber here, for the application. Thank you.
Stephanie, how close is this to Hoffel Plantation?
Yes, sir. I'll move back to that screen. So, this is New Hope right here. Hoffel Broadfield is adjacently to, adjacent to the north. So, this is Hoffel Broadfield here.
And from my understanding, they both were plantations?
That's my understanding as well, correct?
Working, operating plantations.
Yes, sir.
And so, again, was there any kind of investigation for slave cemeteries for African-American families in, on this property?
Yeah, that's a very, very good question. We have had that come up on a couple of the other amendments as well. And I know after, I don't know if it was the last hearing or the hearing before, when they did an amendment, I know Mr. Barber had met on-site with some of the residents in the area that had family members that were potentially buried on this property. To my knowledge, the location has not been identified yet, but I don't know to what extent Mr. Barber has taken in recent months to try to locate that further.
So, he has done nothing? Has he spoken with the folk at the state on the DNR for African-American historic preservation? Do you know?
I do not know if he's had that conversation.
Okay. Again, I can't, I cannot support this. I mean, that, to me, is outrageous to have not really done. Now, if they've done an investigation and they haven't found anything, then I'm totally supportive of this. But the last time he was here, he, I don't know, they hadn't even talked, spoken to the state, which I brought up. And if they haven't talked, spoken to the state now, to me, they don't plan to. So, I mean, it may pass, but if for some reason that we find out that there's enslaved folk that are buried out there, and they have just built over them, I don't know what the consequences will be, but there will be some.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion before we open the public hearing?
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman. Is any Trailers resident still occupying the property?
Yes, sir. This is, you know, an older aerial that does show the mobile home park in the center of the property. To my knowledge, all of the mobile homes from this area have been either moved off to another location or moved somewhere else on the site. There were a few that were, a few residents that do continue to live at New Hope, and I know they were moved a little bit further south on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I've got one. Stephanie, it says movie studios, all buildings will be limited to 60 feet in height, but then it says 45 foot for use in all, all uses outside of movie production is...
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's one of the changes that they're proposing in talking with, you know, the business, you know, the business industry with movie studios, that they needed a higher height limit for that. So, they do have that 60 feet, as long as the fire department approves that, but 45 for all of the other uses on the property.
Is 45 hour, I thought that's where we went with commercial. You're talking about residential being 45 feet, right?
Residential, yeah, the medium residential is 45 feet in the zoning code. And I think they have 45 for the commercial too, but I'll double-check that.
Okay. Because I know, I know the one we just turned down, the Verandas, was 45 and 135, okay.
Yeah, thank you. I'll check that.
All right, Commissioners. Anything else before we open the public hearing?
I guess maybe I'll save the question till after they, they talk up here, but it was my understanding that they wanted to change some of the height due to requirements of the film industry to a higher than 45. Did y'all drop back from that, or are you still wanting to do that? Because this is the time to address it.
Yeah, the Commissioner, the applicant agent did talk with me about that, that may be a potential request this evening. I did mention that substantial changes between the Mainland Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners could potentially send the application back to the Mainland Planning Commission, but I think there is probably a, you know, an area that would be considered not substantial. So, perhaps the county attorney can reflect on that. But I understand they may be requesting an additional 10 feet to up to 70 feet instead of the 60.
Okay. Well, I don't see it, any change or request in that, so I just want to make sure.
What we're looking at says all buildings will be limited to 60 feet in height, subject to approval by the fire chief.
That's correct. That is in your packet. I was just made aware of that today, that that may be a request that they make this evening.
I have one question. They're wanting to change the commercial, they're adding some additional commercial.
Yes, sir.
And it runs into the marsh.
Yes, sir. That I don't, it might be related more to the film industry and needing to use that location for filming. They can expand a little bit more on that, but that is correct. Currently, it doesn't run, we don't have any commercial running to the marsh on the existing PD. As you can see, it's all conservation under the current, so it's a change right here. Thank you.
All right. This is the public hearing. And again, we're limited to 30 minutes each side for ZM 5281. Anyone that wishes to come up and speak in opposition to ZM 5281, please come forward to state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners and taxpayers. My name is Dolores Polite, and I spoke to Mr. Fred Barber, just to inform his person who spoke before me. I was the one brought to his attention in regards to that my ancestors, which my name is Dolores Polite, and my ancestors are buried out there at what was New Hope Plantation now is Hope, New Hope, because I see the name have changed when I passed by there. So, and I was also, Commissioners, very surprised that only African-American person inquired about my ancestors there, which I brought to the Commission's attention before. And if I remember correctly, Commissioner Rukowski, if I'm not pronouncing it correctly, I apologize. But I brought it to your attention. We talked in the hallway, and you said you would have it looked into. And it was more important for them to be concerned about the height of a building, which I respect the architectural structure, than another, any other commissioner on the Commission to inquire maybe my ancestors maybe be out there, because we have been here for so long. So, I'm really disappointed in the Commission that no one else but an African-American person would inquire whether someone, especially a final resting place, our ancestors. And also, I think Commissioner Booker Allen brought to attention, they butt up, New Hope, am I correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. They butt up, right up to Hoffel. So, there was twin plantations. And so, I mentioned it to Mr. Barber. I don't want to be long. I want to be specific. I mentioned it to Mr. Barber when I was here last. I mentioned it to Mr. Barber when I was here last, and he brought to my attention, if I remember correctly, and I can stand to be corrected, that they were, he did not, he had it scanned before, and he made an indication, and it was already grinded up anyway, which I didn't like it, he made that statement. But he said he didn't, he also said he didn't mean it like that, but it was said, so you can't take away once it was said. But I think it's the responsibility of Glen County, one, when you're giving these permits to people that's not, don't have a love for Brunswick. I love Brunswick. I've been here all my life, outside of 20 years, and I've been raised here, and I've been out there to my ancestors' graveyard, from New Hope to Hoffel to Broadfield to Eliza Field to Freedom's Rest to Retreat. I've got family in all these different final resting places. And so I'm still disappointed that I didn't hear any other commissioner inquire, and they're supposed to be here for our tax interest and the governance of good stewardship. So I'm speaking to my Commissioners, I'm speaking to Mr. Fred Barber, and I made a statement to him before, and I really thank God for Mrs. Stephanie Lee, I think I'm not pronouncing her name correctly, the planning development person, she has been consistent in responding to me regarding my ancestors' graveyards. I spoke to the county attorney, no response. I speak to the different ones, and no response. She's the only one that have responded. If I went over my time, please let me know. But I want that outcry to be known, I don't approve them until they come back and give us some kind of reconciliation. My grand aunt, her grandmother, and these people that were born in the early 1900s, and two of their children, they was brought up in 1974. I was in high school. We have the same family conversations about graveyards. We concerned about our final resting places too. And, excuse me, and so I remember my Aunt Eloise had this conversation about, she had two children that was buried out there to New Hope Plantation. Okay, time passed by people raising their children, we trying to eat and all these things from an economic point of view, but my point of view, time has passed, but we didn't forget, we did not forget that our ancestors are still out there. So now they building this granosa studio out there, which we welcome the economics to come to Brunswick. But my point is, give us some respect. This is what I'm asking for. And then back to my point with Mr. Ed Barber, I have not heard from him, and I guess we need to communicate more effectively in regard to, or I put a monument out there, but I'd like to know where they are from a county perspective, and if he's going to come and build on that land, he need to put his investment where it counts and find out where he's not building over graveyards. And I appeal to my Commissions to respect my ancestors, and I respect anyone else's opinion or any question. And I also want to thank you, Commissioner Booker, for bringing that to, bringing it forward, because this has been an outcry, which you know, have been on my plate for a very, very long time. And I don't want to be a sourpuss, but I do want it to be recognized as we are important too. So if anyone have any questions to me, I'm open.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Polite.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And your timing was almost perfect, just a few seconds.
I have a question.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have a question. So you have ancestors on that property, and you said you had been out there and had been at those sites, so you know where they are.
Well, I stand corrected. Let me inform you a little bit more, Commissioner. I have to yield to my older cousin, which was her mother. So she had to, I've been to a lot of the plantations to answer your question. You're right. New Hope is one that I'm not as familiar as my cousin, which was her mother and her siblings. And it was Lar B. Polite Short. She, her mother is there, her great-grandmother's there, her grandmother's there, her mother's there, and two of her siblings is there. And she called me just before, thank you for asking. She called me just before, she said, are you going to the meeting? She's elderly now, she's in her 80s, and she can't move around, so you know, she know I've been on this track for a very long time, sir. So I can bring her in, or she can meet with someone, even have a telephone conference, or she's still mobile, she can confirm, because even your records show from the State Department in 1974, Aunt Eloise and Miss Anderson appealed to the county not to build out there on top of our ancestors' graveyard. So it's documented, not only, no, I have not seen it, I was told, but these are family conversations that we have, because a lot of us are not properly represented. So we have to come up here and appeal constantly from one generation to the next.
Well, it seems like y'all are a very important piece to this pie, that y'all could really actually pinpoint the locations of these graveyards.
If she's still living.
To these developers or to these new property owners.
Yes.
And once they're pinpointing, then they could be set aside.
I think so.
And I think, not that the burden falls to you, but the burden falls to your family members that know exactly where these property, these grave sites are. That would, I would think, fix the problem.
Well, I think she was a younger child that was created later after the other siblings. She knew that they were there, exactly where it's at. I cannot speak for her. But this has been a conversation all my entire life about the graveyards out there on Highway 17, out there Broadfield, out there Eliza Field, out there the Freedom's Rest, all the graveyards in Glen County, from Darien to Camden County. This has been our fight to make sure that we, our graveyards are protected. And I really want to thank Rachel Black, she's over the State Department, and she's, we finally got, we're having a great conversation in addressing the issue, but not this particular issue, but the issues of the African-American graveyards.
So to Commissioner Tosterson's point, I think it's the developers have to work with the families.
Absolutely.
To at least try to do that, and then use modern technology, because we can find the graves, I'm pretty sure. I mean, unless somebody tells me something different.
And that was my understanding, that's why I told you that they were going to check.
Well, you know, Commissioner, you did, and I also thank you too, because you said, well, wait a minute, Ms. Polite, because you know, we said some words, and you know, when you talk about somebody's final rest place, you know, that's like the horns come up automatically. But we got to a conversation, Mr. Barber and I, we had a surface conversation, but thank you, Commissioner, both of you, Commissioner Booker, I know you, I got to get used to your name, Commissioner. I can't see Towson. Oh, I know that name, Towson?
Tosterson.
Thank you. I'm speaking to the commission, but thank you. But yes, I did speak to him outside, and he said he wasn't going to spend another 30, 40,000 to do the radar. And so I said, okay, no, we haven't had extended conversation, but I think we should, and that's the reason why I'm here now. And thank you, thank you, you're right, we should extend that conversation, where they absolutely talking with us as family members, because we're concerned about our ancestors.
I mean, I think y'all can narrow the search, because y'all've got historic knowledge of where these...
No, we don't. That's the issue. I can't say that, that's why I want to ring that back around, sir. I don't. And my cousin, by her being the youngest child that was born later, the fight was all about, her mother knew that they were buried out there. We are too young to know. We talking about late 1800s, early 1900s. So you speaking in that time period, and it's just been a conversation, so we don't have the wherewithal to have the technology to do the scanning, but if they go do that development out there, put that in the budget, and just do the right thing as far as being a good steward. And that's all, that's what I'm speaking upon.
Ms. Polite, I just want to make sure that it's clear. He actually said to you that he's not spending any more money to do a scanning?
Mr. Rukowski, excuse me, did you hear that part? Yes, he did. I can say it. I can say it again.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be so coarse, but yes, he did. He said he wasn't going to spend, and I think he said it here.
Well, in here, he said he would do the...
No, he would speak to the family in regards to putting up a monument, but he wasn't going to spend another $30,000 to, not excavate, to the scanning. I think you all know what I'm speaking of, the radar scanning of the grounds. Yes, no, Mr. Barber said it, and he could stand right beside me, and I know, I could tell him he said it. And it's no argument, it's just that it was a conversation that was had.
All right. Well, it was my understanding they were going to do that, so...
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition to ZM 5281?
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you very much.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those who wish to speak in favor of ZM 5281, please come forward and state your name for
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jake Hightower. I'm with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm here as the authorized agent for this project. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you to Ms. Polite for bringing forth her concerns. What I'm going to do is I'm going to speak to the plan development text, but in terms of answering some of those questions that were good questions that were raised, Mr. Barber is here, he can speak to a bunch of those. What I'd like to do with respect to everyone, including Ms. Polite, is speak to the changes on the PD text, and then see what answers I can answer from y'all regarding any topic of any sort. But like I said, I just wanted to not just step past the points that were just brought up, but at least specify what I can speak to, and then answer any questions that anybody might have as well. So when we first came to y'all back in August, we came and got this PD approved, which would allow us to have the movie studio development along this side of the property right here. We also did state in that meeting that though we're at that meeting, we would be, we knew we were going to be coming forward, because the process it takes from turning in an application until you actually come before the Board of Commissioners, some things can transpire, including at that time was interest from the university of using some land closer to the Marsh. So this was what was approved with the medium residential, I think it's 42 acres, then it's 20 acres of residential here. This is 8.99 acres of either commercial residential. This is the existing commercial that was used specifically for movie studios. Ms. Leaf is correct in saying that we asked to expand this by five acres. The reason for this expansion right here is to allow for basically uses to support the movie studios. There's a lot of good land here that's not going to be disturbed in terms of putting a building, but it's going to be used for parking on grade, basically without actually tearing down any trees or anything. And then there was a question as to what is this commercial piece over here and what are these other uses? What this is, is as we've worked through meetings with existing movie studio architects, movie studio builders, movie studio personnel who do set finding, basically location managers, they basically specified the amount of space that's required, and so that was the amount of, that's what the request is. And also, this does not go to the Marsh. This is actually the FEMA line right here, to where you're, the upwind of this line is actually, we're probably 150 feet or so from the Marsh line. The Marsh line would have, depending on, it'd have a 25-foot CNPA buffer, but we're actually about 150 feet from there. So Mr. Barber was very clear in saying, we're not going to have commercial go to the Marsh. We still have that large buffer, and that's that flood zone line that you see there. Additionally, I can speak to the building question. When we went before the MPC, when we turned in our zoning, it was part of, you can call it, it's the Trilith Studios out of Fayetteville, Georgia. It's a studio that's already been built. We are working with their architects right now. We use their zoning, and that's kind of the whole reason we came back before y'all was to not only talk about the master plan of the different acreage, but also the uses that movie studios required. Our first movie studio application just said movie studios and ancillary uses, but they actually said that we've built them, we've gone through this process before, so we want to make sure that we have all the entitlements needed. So that's what we put forth in the PD text. When they did their first PD up in Fayetteville, theirs was 60 feet, but once they actually did the design with the catwalks, and they were telling me about basically the beams for the equipment, that's where that extra 10-foot comes in, and that's why that request was brought forth tonight. And again, I'd leave it up to the discretion of the Board to, let's speak more to that, or if that's something that we need to address at future date, we can as well. But that basically is the reason why we said it was 60 feet for movie studios, which is approved as it stands today for right here. These studios are approved, but we are asking that if we do go forward, that we would ask for that extra 10 feet. Like I said, the architects, when they actually laid out the buildings and started their design, they said that that's actually not going to be sufficient. So that's just a little background there. Other than that, that's really the changes from before. If I could have the IT group get off of this screen, I've got a presentation that shows some of the before and the after, as well as a picture of what one of the studios are that this architect builds, if that'd be possible. If I could have control, I see it on the screen. I believe I showed this presentation in the before. Thank you. Basically, this is what the New Hope facility looked like before Mr. Barber took it over. You can see there were trailers, and what he's done is he's been able to actually clean the site of some of those trailers, the ones, he can speak to what was done, but the ones that could be moved, were moved offsite. There's still some onsite, and that's part of what this PD also addresses, is that what they're doing is they're, they've cleaned up the site, moved some, excuse me, some mobile homes to a different part of the property, and then over time, as those residents move out, then they'll slowly take away that mobile home use, so that will not be a use going forward. But you can see, this is what the site looked like beforehand. These are still before photos. I remember walking out there two years ago when I saw what this looked like. And now this is what it looks like today. They've cleaned it up, and they're preserving all these nice large oaks. These are kind of closer to the Marsh, and this is where the pads used to be. At this point in time, that grass has actually grown in, and that's kind of what the surrounding areas look like. I don't need to do an aerial video. This is what I was going to show in case it wasn't shown tonight, but Ms. Leaf did a good job of explaining the differences between the current zoning and then the plan forward. Again, this zoning is already approved, and there already is a site plan approved as well for this building. And if I may take a minute to say also, no matter where we build within Glen County, it's a very historic place, whether we're in the county, on one of the barrier islands, anywhere within the county, if any construction happens, whether it's here, across the street, down the road, other side, exit 29, wherever it is, if anything is found from an architectural remains, the state requires that you shut it down, and you call an architect to come in there, and they have to do an excavation of the site. It's also in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineers. So no matter where we are, whether it's this project or in any other, if an architectural site is found, that's the requirement by law that they have to follow. And so that was something just to, I guess, point out when it comes to the fact that we do live in a historical place that has a lot of history all throughout the coast, anywhere we build within this great county. This right here is the studios, this is called Blue Star Studios. This is one that was also designed by the architect on the project. Like I said, he's already been engaged and has been working on design. You can see when we talk about the height, this is what's called a mill house, this is basically where they do a lot of their work and construction on sites, and kind of, that's kind of the, like I said, where they, it's called the mill house, it's a flex space. But then this is the studio right beside it. The request is not to have a stu, is not to have buildings throughout the site this height, this high. The rest of the site residential is all asked to be at the 45-foot height. It's just only for movie studios, that it actually goes to the higher height, so any other portion of the property would not be allowed to build that high. With that, I appreciate your time. Please let me know if you have any questions. And like I said, Mr. Barber is here as well.
Jake?
Sir.
Could you put that, the aerial...
Yes, sir.
My question was, in the beginning, this was took up the joint water and sewer, and now I see that there's a water tower?
So that's correct. At the very beginning, the very first time we came for zoning, the plan was to do a water treatment facility onsite. There already is an existing water tower, water treatment facility right now. That was the plan, to use the existing wells and to use this as a site, and it was going to be in conjunction with the Joint Water and Sewer Department. When you actually look at how their infrastructure is laid out, they're, they basically stop at Harry Driggers, but then north of Harry Driggers is New Hope, but then north of that is the Hoffel-Broadfield, so that's, there's not much service past that point. So it, when it came down to it, they were looking at two sites for, they basically needed another treatment plant on the north end of Glen County, and they were looking at the Glen New Hope site, and then they looked at the, I think, some land associated with Morning Star, and neither of which worked out. And honestly, they say that they'd like to be on the west side of 95. So the plan here, because we've already sat down with Joint Water and Sewer Commission and said, what would we need to do in order to get water and sewer service for this property? Well, we came to the conclusion with... Well, we came to the conclusion with, in conjunction with Joint Water and Sewer, is that we would do a private water tower using the existing wells, but we're going to build it to the standards to where if Joint Water and Sewer wanted to get into public partner, public-private partnership, then it would be to their standards. But at this time, it's planned to be private to facilitate the water usage by the movie studios. It's more than what you, than what would be, you know, thought of as normal. It's, it's, basically they have their own, their own plans and they have to have water scenes and the fire suppression as well. Since this, this septic system can't handle the amount required, the plan with Joint Water and Sewer is to extend a forest main from this property to the Joint Water and Sewer system.
I was going to say, is that an oxidation pond now?
Yes, sir, it's an oxidation pond now, but it's going to be cleaned up and put out of service and there's actually, they're going to end up remediating that site right there because it is right by the marsh basically and it discharges out that side.
You know, where you were showing the, the changes in your...
Yes, sir. Well, actually, that was Ms. Leaf's presentation.
In different zoning requests. And I'm going back to the, to the graveyards again.
Yes, sir.
That being a plantation, it was probably in existence for, I wouldn't say hundreds of years, but over 100 years. People died there, white and black, because it was, you know, it was a plantation. And my question is, and just from my history, being born and raised here, cemeteries were always basically put on the highest piece of property. And I was going to ask you if you know where the highest piece of property is on that overlay there. The, I mean, you got, you got a high, you got a high piece of property somewhere on that plantation. And generally, being low country where we live, they bury people on the highest piece of property on the, the land.
So as you can see here, these are actually wetlands right here. So that's actually really wet and there's a ditch that runs along here and there's a ditch that runs along this piece right here. Your wet, your highest points would be furthest from, and this is a ditch that runs up to here. You can see that your floodlines run along this track right here and then they swing down and then they follow up this path right here. So your highest, your highest land is in this area and then probably in this area too. But like I said, these wetland pockets here, they're all connected to this ditch system. So this right along here is not your, your highest land. But again, I could, I could send you a topographic. We've already sent a surveying crew to survey this entire piece of property with SHOOP Surveying and, and I could provide that survey that shows.
I mean, that's where I would start, my search of graveyards would be the highest piece of property. And have you found any graveyards there at all?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
So, I mean, because there would be, there would be, I would think, white people and black people buried on that, on that property. And they usually would bury them on the highest piece of property on the property, highest piece of land on the property.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. And that was just...
Yes, sir. And there's just, there's, there's not been a substantial building within the property itself to, to have finds, to find something basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have no more questions.
All right. Thank you Jake.
Yes, sir.
In keeping with rules, anyone else that wants to speak in favor, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you, sir. And I'll be available for more questions if any do arise.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. And Mr. Barber, do you want to come forward at this point?
I would rather answer questions. Good afternoon Commissioner Fred Barber. Nice to see y'all. Yeah, so I'll, I'll just start with what, with you, Ms. Polite. You know, we spoke a couple of times and then I have actually had, I think you're Allen and Karen Polite out to the property. And then I've talked to Karen several times since then. I have had an open door policy and invitation to any information that I was not able to find on Glenn County's record, on state record. We have had LiDAR mapping done. I'm willing to send the drones back out and redo that again. I've never said I wasn't going to spend the money to do it.
It's on the, it's on the county record here.
Okay, well, but...
It's not debatable, I'll just bring it to your attention.
And then the other thing that I've done is I've backtracked, besides Joe I. Sally, I went back to the last two property owners whose kids were raised there, went there in the summer, who actually moved that house out to the property. That house wasn't originated to the property from, from the get-go, it was moved there. So, you know, I've asked them if they've had a cemetery or anything that they've come across and they have all said no. I have video on my phone I'll share with you when we get out of here. So all I can do in my heart, like I've told Karen and you're Allen, is to give it the most visible, if we find a grave, I'll fence it, wall market and all that. But until then, I have a boat dock that I've got in DNR right now where I'm going to have an observation tower where you can see out over the rice fields and over the property. It can educate everybody up there. Bring me what you want to be educated.
And in this light, we're not going to, we're not going to go back.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, but only thing I would like to go, I'd like to say, Laura B. is the sibling of the people that was buried and I can introduce you to her. Because she's more apt to be more informative than myself because I'm much younger than she is. And so we'll have that, because we have had extended conversations and so we are broadening to make sure that's addressed.
We'd be glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
And it's not, I mean, going forward, I mean, I've, I've even said around the house that's there that we're renovating and going to use for an office and things like that, that we're going to try to bring back of, like a farm and a heritage and a timeline and, and things like that and educate around the house, even around where the college may or may not put buildings to, to continue studies out in the marsh and to continue to bring in production and film and have like an internship program to the movie studios. I've spoken with the, with the Board over there and that's, that's a big dream, but they're moving it through to accept the land donation right now as well. I mean, Mr. Booker, it, it is not to my knowledge of any of this out here, there's no record of it. And I mean, and look, my phone, my phone number is wide open. You can call me with any information you have and meet me out at the site.
But that's not, that's, that is not what's needed now. Are there other things that you can do to make sure that there's no cemetery?
I just asked you for it. I invited you out to the property.
You're the developer, sir.
Yes, sir, but you...
I'm not, I'm not the developer.
Oh, yes, sir, but you're saying that your information is...
So if neither one of us know, who should find out if there's other technology that you can use?
Other than LiDAR mapping, you got a recommendation that shoots under the ground, that's what you use. I've done it a whole...
So if we've done that, then like I said, then I wouldn't have a problem with it. If you've done everything that you know how to do, to recognize.
And look, even if we come across it, we'll fence it off, but why not give them a more visible place as you drive up and around the studios, we're still have the housing and everything. Why not give it visual? Why not invite them to go out to the dock and really look over the old rice fields that we're going to be concerned?
I, I don't know, but...
I think that's the best way I can do it and if you agree with all that, I mean, we'll pack it full.
But again, again, I asked the question, if you've done everything, we're using technology to find out if graves are out there. Now, if you haven't, then we'll have to deal with it from there. But if you're telling me that that's what you've done, then that's fine. That's all you can do.
And I've also gone a step further and asked if there's any more information out there that I don't know about, I'm having open door policy to give it to me.
Let me ask this...
If I don't know what I don't know and you don't know what you don't know, how do we know, other than to give it the homage and the heritage that it deserves out in that piece of property?
Have you spoken with the state? What does the state say?
The state, right now, I don't know what they're going to say. I mean, how do you know what they're going to say?
But they have a whole, hold up, Delores, because really it's just him talking. The state has a whole department for African-American Historic Preservation.
Right.
And I brought this up at the other meetings and for you not to at least have spoken to them, and now you're saying, "Well, I've done all these other things."
We're talking to...
So how should, how should, how should we feel about this and you, if you haven't even made a call to the experts for the state?
Well, it would seem like if you needed them out there, you would have them out there. I have done my mapping, my LiDAR mapping, I've talked to the people that have brought it to the...
Mr. Barber, you're the developer.
Right.
Don't put this back on me.
But look, if you have something I need, please give it to me.
You decided to develop this piece of property on, on a plantation. And doing, and I'm assuming this is not your first time developing a piece of property.
No.
And so for you to keep telling me, "Well, you know, what should I do?", tell me what to do. That doesn't make any sense, sir.
I'm working with y'all. I'm working, I'm going well above...
It doesn't make any sense. It's fine. I have one other question. Aaron.
Ms. Polite.
The information...
Is this five minutes?
The information that Ms. Polite brought to you, did it seem like credible information? And how is it, is it pertaining to any information that Mr. Barber could use or has he seen any of that information?
Mr. Barber and I have not spoken directly, but the information that, that we've received and Stephanie and I, Ms. Leaf and I have spoken about, you know, we've looked at it through community development and I was not able to ascertain, you know, enough information to, to determine if there was or was not, you know, the existence of a cemetery. And that, that was the difficult part for us is that we just didn't have that enough information to, to really go on. But we have, have looked at it and, and, you know, in conjunction with community development and just tried to figure out, you know, what, what, if any, is there out there. But we have not been able to make that determination.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fendig, we're still in the public hearing. And if you've got a follow-up question, we've sort of off of, off of our normal track here, it's become a discussion, but, but if there is no one else to speak in favor, we've got about five more minutes of this hour. So you're welcome to speak.
Well, on the other side of, of this, I think that we've been very patient in moving the people. We've, we've given them almost two years to make up their mind to where they could move, where they wanted to move. We moved them at our cost, the trailers that were owned. We've helped other trailer parks expand their rents and tenants. We've contained, we've taken out a lot of old industrial equipment. It's a lot cleaner site, I think, with what's going to go on to preserve our fragile coastline in the back of this property and us taking the detention retention pond out, we have a big impact coming there. I think that the potential to have a, a impact of that part of the county, we've, we've been patient and I think we can employ a lot of people and house a lot of good people out there in that part of the county with what we plan on doing in businesses that are interested in the film industry and other industries to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you.
We will now close the public hearing and Commissioners, we're back to you. Any questions that you'd like to ask Mr. Barber, Mr. Hightower, Ms. Polite? Floor's yours.
Well, just several firsts for the county attorney. So I've had great privilege to be involved in the film industry for, since the 70s, pretty much anything that's ever come to town. I've worked alongside of them and I've met with Mr. Barber and Michelle on this project. So recently, they asked me to come to a meeting with the prospective buyer and developer for the industry, movie film industry. When I met him, I realized that we had done some film work in the past, so I'm familiar with who it is and the company. With that said, does that, is, am I able to vote or not to vote on this issue? That'd be my first question.
Mr. President, based on what you've, you've just told me and what I know of your interaction here, I don't, I don't see any reason why you could not, just based on that alone. And so, no, sir. I don't, I don't see a conflict based on that.
Okay. I just want to make clear that before we move forward. The second thing is, is that growing up, I had a great privilege to follow around with an archaeologist on St. Simons who has uncovered most of the Indian graveyards and other sites and worked with Fort Frederica out there when my family was involved in helping that. So pretty much, if there are unknown designated areas, I don't, I didn't check before this tonight because I didn't know this was coming up, but I'm sure the engineer can tell you that if you're doing a project and you run across unknown remains, you're required to stop and notify not only police or, or other historians to come and examine what you have. And most of the times, 99% of the times, they don't excavate or disturb those graves any further. They identify them or whatever the history is and they're required to cover them back up unless there's some special reason to bring them out. We have several places on St. Simons where that was done, where Indians or other people were found buried, they're covered back up. We have them in one of our parks, but it's not identified exactly where that is. I know it because I was alongside with the kids. To your interest and to everybody's concern is that I've known Mr. Barber and Michelle a long time and I believe in their integrity, they hadn't done anything that I would disrespect with. And the concerns is I'm sure that if they move forward on this project, if that arose or if there are extra things that they have done, like flying LiDAR, they would immediately stop by law and, and contact authorities and also reach out to you. Right now, there's nothing known or open. So the thing we need to come by together is that we want to work as a community and make sure that your voice has been heard and the concerns about your family and, and their history and legacy. And I feel very confident that Mr. Barber and his associates will respond appropriately if that's found. So I, I think, and with Commissioner Booker, I think they're, they're honorable people and they've done so far all that they know. There's no records out there, there's no findings, there's nothing yet to be done. Mr. Commissioner Tosson's offered some examples that you might could go back and check certain High Point areas. So anything, I just, I think we need to make sure that we understand what the process is in historic preservation and how that works. And it is an obligation of this commission and our communities and by law to preserve that history wherever it's found, identify it and then those appropriate authorities make decisions specifically on what happens on that property. I think we're all in pretty good shape at the moment and the encouragement is to continue that due diligence and an eye. That's all. I want to vouch for his character and his effort in this project. That's all.
I, I continue to have concerns. I know, Ms. Polite, the state is doing some work out in the area as well. Can you explain that around cemeteries?
Thank you for inquiring, Commissioner Booker. I wanted to add also to answer your question, I wanted to add, it's in your files, the state archaeologist has the records, because I have a copy of them, because I've been doing this for a very long time. So it's records, if anyone can contact the State Department, Amy Bogart, she has the records, historical data. So the data is there. Okay, yes, sir, I am working with the State Department now with the Hoffel Plantation because my family's a descendant and I have had this, this itch for a very long time since I was 16 when her father trained me to go out there and we were going out there to learn our history and, meaning William Green. And so to say that, I'm, I'm very pleased, even though it had taken 50 years plus to clean that grave site, a Broadfield, because it's under, under the directive of the Hoffel Plantation. They cleaned and kept the white culture... They cleaned and kept the white culture updated, but the African-American culture, they did not. And that was my outcry. And I have, Mr. Commissioner Booker, have heard me for many years, and when he see me come, and he said, okay, it's the same story. And it's going to be the same story till I die, and I'm passing it on to my children, that we are concerned about our ancestors. And to answer your question, yes, I'm pleased to finally have a relationship with the State Department in upgrading the Broadfield Cemetery. And Rachel Black, she's over the cemeteries for the state of Georgia, so she can be reached. Mr. Giles, he's the ranger, which I know you all are aware. And DNR have met with me, the archaeologists have met with me, the anthropologists have met with me, and they are concerned because they have been so neglected out there on 99 and 17, they're moving cautiously, also not to forget Freedom's Rest, where they barred us, the county barred us from going to my grandfather's graveyard at Freedom's Rest. So to answer your question, Commissioner Booker, yes, I have finally developed a relationship with the State Department.
And so, thank you, Ms. Polite. My point, and you know, Commissioner Fendig, you and I have been working on this studio project, and when I first heard about this, I was elated about this. But now, to meet Mr. Barber, and I guess, I don't understand why he wouldn't just call the state. I mean, they're here, obviously, they have some experts in doing this. And yes, he's done some things, he's done the, I guess, the drones, or whatever, but not, why not go the extra mile? And, you know, to make sure. So, and so how should I feel about this? And about you? If that's the case? Obviously, there is, and I suggested this, call the state. Obviously, they have some folk who could help. So I don't understand that. And I have to make a decision about this. This may pass. It should pass with me wholeheartedly supporting it. But this is something, I mean, I just don't understand it. So.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Booker.
I'll call the state and get you professionals out there. There's nothing in your books here in the county, there's been all I've been on to do to do. Look for headstones, light them out. The property has been owned by me for about three years now. Nobody in the past has been giving y'all the time of day. And I have. I'll call the state, and we're going to move forward. And then the other thing about this, is if there is something, I'll fence it and notify it. I do it all the time. The other thing is, why not give a clear, visual timeline, and several other pieces of the property, that gives them a clear history and heritage, voices heard, acknowledgement for the rest of the property's life? That's where I'm going.
Mr. Barber, I agree with you. My point was, if you had called them this past time, and didn't work with the family, we would be in a different place now.
I have been in touch with the family, Mr. Booker. I have been in touch with them.
But that's what I'm saying. If you called the state, if you called the state, they have relationships locally. Obviously, Ms. Polite and others have been working on the cemeteries renovations for a long time now.
Right.
And so that's all I'm saying.
And I've acknowledged them. We'll follow up completely with everything that you have a problem with. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Hightower?
Thank you, Commissioner. I was just sitting there thinking, what else, what checks can be in place? You know, we talk about what we can do, but in order for this project to go forward, as it's already zoned right now, in order to put a building out there, we have to go through site plan approval. The 31st requirement on our checklist is location of existing graves. That's one more check to make sure that Mr. Barber has contacted the state, done, and this will go back through the planning staff, to where this will be a, and Ms. Leaf brought it up, the first site plan, of where we're putting our proposed building, the first one, which that site plan is going to expire as we get our full site development plan put together. But that's one more check the county has, where planning and zoning staff can work with Mr. Barber to ask, have you satisfied what's being asked? And like I said, I just was thinking about what is still in place by ordinances, and the 31st requirement on checklist for a site plan is that we do such work, so at that point, planning and zoning staff can work with Mr. Barber to ask those questions. Otherwise, that site plan would not be approved. So that's just one more thing in addition to this existing zoning that's already approved, as we're looking for some expansion. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any other discussion?
One other question. So when I had met with y'all, and then a phone call later, you talked about that the film company and the purchaser had some concerns about the height level, to be able to use traveling booms for rolling cameras and lights and so forth like that. So is the 60-foot height what y'all are at now? Or where's that discussion at?
Commissioner Fendig, we had a meeting with the architects last week, and reviewing what we have in place, and they said that the 60-foot would not be sufficient. They said 65 might work, but they asked for the 70, the extra 10 feet. And so in order to get the equipment up there, that's what they're asking for. And the reason, like I said before, was that the original zoning that they had was for 60 feet, but they had to go back and amend that when they got their buildings actually designed for the square footage.
So what height are we dealing with tonight? Because it says 60 in the-
It says 60, yes, sir. And so I was asking the commission if it's a request that we can ask to do the extra 10 feet, or if we can make, or if need be, if the attorney says we need to keep it as is, and we can come back through a second time for the extra 10 feet. But we've gone through this amendment, and we deferred the MPC many times to try to make sure that we had the architect's input. And like I said, that last, this last week was when they said, they were looking through everything, and they said that the design requirements are for the extra 10 feet.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Stephanie, can you go back over exactly what this is?
So, yeah, for recent applications, if there is any kind of substantial change between MPC's recommendation and the BOC meeting, then that technically does need to go back to the Menel Plan Commission for review, so it'd be a remand back to them to review because it is a change, and it wasn't part of what was noticed, you know, for that meeting. And, you know, my understanding is that is the only change, is an additional 10 feet in the building height. So I, you know, kind of questionable of how substantial of a change is that. So that's where we're at tonight. And that, like I said, that did just come to my attention today, so of course, your packet that was sent out includes the 60 feet, not the 70.
Has that been updated in the packet?
No, it has not.
It has not been? Got it. It's just an extra 10 feet of height for the-
Correct. For movie studios only.
Yeah. Commissioner, I don't see that as a substantive enough change to remand it back down, if the board would like to make that change tonight. So, no, I don't think it has to be.
So you're saying we can change that height tonight?
Correct. As long as the motion, any motion the board makes includes that increase in it as well.
Okay.
So I suggest it would be a condition that the plan development text is revised to change 60 to 70.
Mr. Barber, is that still, or Jake, is that still what y'all want to do? So you're asking to insert the 70 feet? Okay. Might be some more discussion on that, but I don't think so. I mean, that's what we're bringing, trying to bring, is film company. They're tired of Savannah. Atlanta, they can't get around to film. We're the next gold nugget. It's big on jobs, especially for common labor. I think it's a productive thing. I don't have, you got the motion thing up there?
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll do that.
And if I can interject?
Sure.
Do we want to entertain the idea of requiring the state? Who was the state group, Commissioner Booker?
It's the state of Georgia, under DNR.
Yeah, DNR.
To ask for that as part of the, it's just a thought, and it's your motion, so.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just trying to help us get through a little difficulty here. In fact, it's not even my district, so I'm glad to. I think that the motion we're looking for is, number two, is approve the proposed zoning decision with modifications to raise the height to 70 feet, and require immediate and ongoing contact with DNR concerning historic resources that might be found on the property.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion before the vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I'm abstaining, because I do support the project, but I am abstaining.
All right. So we have six in the affirmative, and one abstention by Commissioner Booker. All right. All right. Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Item number 33 under general business, approve an amendment to chapter 2-26 of the Glene County Code of Ordinances to amend section 2-26-15 of the Public Conduct Ordinance to remove Selden Park Gym as an authorized location for the consumption of alcoholic beverages and for other purposes. And Commissioner Booker, we have this-
Right. Lisa, can you tell us if we're moving, does this bring us in line with what our other parks and facilities do?
For the majority, yes, sir. Most of our parks are not on the list.
Ms. Garganis, let me interrupt you just a minute. To, for those of you that came in tonight on this, we want to thank you for coming, and you're not required to stay for the rest of the meeting, but thank you so much for your interest in coming tonight. And Ms. Garganis?
There are several parks that are on the list. Gascoigne Park, Neptune Park, Black Island Regional Park, but most of the parks in the county are not on the list. Ballard Park is not. Mallory Park is not. So the, most of the parks are not on the list for alcohol. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure.
All right. Any other discussion on this item?
Just question, Lisa, and Commissioner Booker, we talked about the timing of the events. If Selden Park was allowed, was much later than any other park.
Yeah, I think we cut it back to be-
To 11:00 PM. We talked about moving that back from 1:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And that's not a part of the ordinance, but that's more of an internal procedural thing, policy, that we have already amended our rental agreement to reflect that direction from the board at the March 21st meeting.
All right. All right, Commissioners, any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I approve an amendment to chapter-
Oh?
Sir?
You said I approve. I moved to approve.
I moved to approve, I'm sorry. An amendment to chapter 2-26 of the Glene County Code of Ordinances to amend section 2-26-15 of the Public Conduct Ordinance to remove Selden Park Gym as an authorized location for consumption of alcoholic beverages and for other purposes.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion?
I know, I do want to acknowledge that we have a member of the Selden Park Advisory Board here, and she has raised, and some of the other advisory board members raised questions about doing this. And so I've talked, explained to them that I'm the one leading and requesting this because of previous incidents that have happened out at the park. And so, but I don't know if we can allow her to say anything, Mr. Chairman, tonight. I know we've gone through the public hearing, I believe, last time, but if we can allow her a couple of minutes, just to make a comment.
I think upon your request, we can do that.
Okay. All right.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ashley Jackson, and I am a part of the Selden Park Advisory Board. We also have Ms. Tova, who was a part of the Selden Park Advisory Board, too. So the questioning about the ordinance was brought up to the Selden Park Advisory Board, but when Ms. Lisa did come to us about it, she told us that she wanted us to be on board with her for this. We never talked about a solution to the problem of what was going on, because anybody who is staff at the park or has had events at the park know, on the inside of the gym, there has not been any, anything that has happened, because there are police officers that are inside whenever there is alcohol. Now, on the outside, people are supposed to have officers, but they're not physically in the area where it can be managed properly. They know what's going on at that time. So we have never had an incident inside of the gym with alcohol, and that was what we were trying to express to Lisa, and we never really got to talk to Commissioner Booker about that, but that is something that we strongly address. And also, that is where most of our revenue comes from as well, with people renting out the gyms. And like I said, we haven't had any issues with that. And so I had sent an email, but it was a little late, so I'm sure it was not given. And I just said, I'm writing this email in regards to considering to seize the passing of the new ordinance for alcohol in the historic park, and also the curfew. We would really love to express our concerns and opinions on how the board feels about the drastic changes here at Selden Park. As Commissioners, you elected us, each of us, to serve on the Selden Park Board, and to advocate for the park's best interest. This past year, our concerns haven't been acknowledged or considered. Our goal is to help create a safe space for our community and our staff. We want to be a part of the discussion, and hope you will consider postponing the ordinance until the board is able to share our concerns and solutions to this matter. And just hope you guys could just at least give us a chance to come up, give you guys some solutions, and let you know what the community is saying as well. And Tova, yeah.
Well, the main thing, hi, my name is Tova Reuven Yisrael, and I'm the new member that was elected last month at your meeting. The main thing that I was looking at is because, looking at the different cultures that use that rec center, specifically, because that is the only facility that allows alcohol, and because they do have to have the officers there, we have the East Indian community, we do have the Latino community, and they are basically, that is mainly the only facility in the area that will allow that, and we have not, so far from my records that I've seen, there has not been an issue on the internal, which is inside the gym. Apparently, all the damage or the issues have been the external, and that's the reason why we did not want the internal to be affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Booker, do you have any?
Yeah, I hear you, ladies. And what I would like to do going forward, because I really did think that the staff had been talking to you all about this before it came to us. We're going to go forward with this tonight, that's what I'm going to suggest, and we'll see what happens as far as the revenues. But I will get with you, and we'll see, and if we need to reverse it going forward, I'll lead the charge to reverse it going forward.
Any other discussion? Mr. Attorney, we did have a proper motion and second on this, right? Clerk? I'm sure we did.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion before we vote? All right. All in favor of amending the Code of Ordinances for Selden Park, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 34, consider an amendment to chapter 2-11 of the Glene County Code of Ordinance, Glene County, Georgia, to amend articles 1, 2, and 3 to revise regulation for the use of parks, to revise regulations for the use of beaches, and for other purposes. Ms. Garganis?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. For the past couple of years, actually, Will Worley and I have been looking at the Chapter 2-11 Parks and Recreation Ordinances. There are some things that needed to kind of, some housekeeping changes that needed to be updated, and it's been a while because of different, you know, changes in leadership and things. It's taken a while to bring it forward, but we feel like we've probably got it in the best place it can be right now. I wanted to bring this for your consideration. I can go through the, some of the changes if you're interested in going through some of those, but most of the changes are just really cleaning up some of the things. As an example, we added Glenhaven Park. It wasn't in the ordinance. It's a new park in our community, so we needed to add that. We changed, we eliminated the name Brunswick Villas Madge Merritt Park and added Ahmad Arbery Park because that's something that's happened in the last couple of years. We have clarified some definitions of different things in there. We have tightened up some of the rules related to recreational vehicles with overnight parking in our county parks. And then we've looked at the beach ordinances, and we've added some things in there, some rules in there, and some clarifications of things like commercial activities on the beach. So we just kind of took a holistic view of the entire ordinance and just kind of basically did a lot of housekeeping. There's nothing, in my opinion, that's very significant that, you know, that's concerning, but you may have some concerns and questions, and I'm happy to answer those.
All right, Commissioners?
Always something of concern on St. Silens. Well, I'm open, but I think that there's a lot of stuff in here that people kind of need to sort through their heads, and for some reason, they don't do that before it, even though we advertise it. I've had a few calls here and there. I would probably like to defer it to the next meeting and have a little more PR, Katie, put out so that people will know that we're doing this as a courtesy for their wake-up call and response and looking at it so that we don't have any complaints or there's nothing we really need to adjust. It gets, all of this kind of gets confused in the minutia, and they pick up the phone or email and say, oh, my God, what are y'all doing here? And there are a lot of those that we've talked about that you've, y'all have improved on. So will you be okay with that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. It's been a while in the making, so if we need to take a little more time and just make sure everything's in place and in order, certainly, yes, sir.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to defer item 34 to the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Clark to defer item 34 to our next regular meeting. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is deferred. Item number 35, consider adoption of an amendment to Sections 101-3 and 104-8 of the Glen County Personnel Policy regarding the police chief. And Commissioner Tosterson, this has your name on it?
Yes. This is just a simple correction, and I'm going to defer to our county attorney for a brief explanation of what this is for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Tosterson. So, yes, this amendment is fairly straightforward. It does two things. The first of which is to remove the chief of police position out from underneath the personnel policy, and it will place it in the policy that this position is, in fact, a contract position, contract with the Board of Commissioners, as opposed to a covered position of the policy. That makes it consistent with county manager's position and, as well as the county attorney's position as well. Part two of that is, in order to make it consistent with those other positions, part two of this amendment would require the Board of Commissioners to approve the, any employment of a relative of the chief of police. So it's essentially a nepotism provision. It doesn't prohibit it, it just requires the Board of Commissioners to pre-approve that if that relative is to be hired, and that's similar to what is already in place for the county manager and myself.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any other comment?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right, is there any discussion on this, Commissioners? All right.
I make a motion that we adopt the, an amendment to Section 101.3 and 104.8 from the Glen County Personnel Policy regarding the police chief.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion?
Just one comment. This, so everybody understands in the plain English, we are taking the police chief position and put it as an at-will contract with the commission, but his reporting and his personnel obligations are to the county manager. Well, I thought we had had this done, but in the changes of things, it didn't get done properly, and so I thank Commissioner Tosterson for getting it back on the docket.
Well, just to clarify things, the portion that you're referring to, signing to the county manager, that comes with the contract that he will sign, and that's per police chief, how we decide we want to do that.
Right.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? And we have a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We have no public comment tonight. No one signed up, but we do need executive session for personnel and...
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into executive session for personnel and pending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, and I think I heard first, a second by Commissioner Swett. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, we are recessed to executive session.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tosses and a second by Commissioner Rofalsky. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We are in session.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes from the March 16, 2023 executive session.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the minutes of what day?
March 16, 2023.
March 16, 2023. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the county attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalsky. Heard a second first by Commissioner Fendig. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any other business to come before the commission tonight? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a have a motion by Commissioner Rofalsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We stand adjourned.